Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm going to serve as the mayor of the city of Vader. I extend the cordial welcome to all of you for attending tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. And so extend the gratitude for our elected officials who are with us as well. I'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this, the 28th day of March, 2019. So we'll now proceed with our roll call and the diarist.
Do I call Judy?
Well, yes.
I'm not sure. Okay, Judy Costello.
She is not present because she has a sedentary letter of resignation, which I will explain in greater detail momentarily.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Ken Smith.
Also present. So we do have a quorum despite Judy's absence. So we will proceed now. We invite all to please rise for our pious delegates. And Mr. Schei, would you lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Schei. All right, we'll proceed with the mayor's report. There, I have three items you'll note. You'll recall, I believe, that we've had some difficulties with our air readers, and so we did some research, and I'm pleased to report that we were offered three air readers from the very generous little city of Orting. So we proceeded to pay $1 for those air readers, which is a real advantage that we have when it's an inter-community transaction. So we've collected, we've actually gotten two of them from Orton. One is functioning and in place, and the second one had some motor problems, but Kelly Costello from Apple Electric came and did some servicing on that, and it is now functioning as well. So we'll install that in our lagoon system tomorrow, too. So contrary to some alarmed citizens, then, we aren't going to be dipping into our waste treatment budget. It will cost just $1 for that. So I pay a commendation to our city clerk and others who did the research and the outreach efforts with the city of Orting. It's a reflection on their professionalism.
If I can say Evergreen Rural Water, Lauren Stevenson.
Also.
We pay a couple hundred every year to participate in that group, and he has proven time after time with things like this, connecting us to be worth it.
A real godsend. Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. Item number two, upgrade on the wastewater treatment upgrade project, funding the income survey. For those of you who may have been following the logistical developments of our emerging new wastewater treatment plant are aware that the state of Washington has deemed our city excessively affluent to receive or qualify for CDBG funding, grant funding. And that has been an ongoing problem. We've had Jamie Herrera Butler, our state representative representing us, going back in Washington, even representing the city of Vader as well as Mossy Rock, trying to overturn that HUD finding, which isn't, we believe, based in reality. But nonetheless, we are still in that category. But the Department of Ecology, understanding our circumstances, has informed us that they will perform this income survey at no charge to the city and residents of Vader, which those who may not be familiar with that would normally cost at least $5,000 and maybe more, right?
Closer to 15 is what they were originally quoting.
Yeah. And so that, I would also add, is as a result of our ongoing, long-term, positive relationship with the Department of Ecology, who've worked with us for the last eight years, patiently as we've worked past the issues we've had with our lagoon system. So this represents a major development for our community. The important takeaway from that disclosure is that we will likely, in order to make this project work, need to get 80% or above participation from the waste treatment utility customers in our community. And according to Kathy Reed from the Washington State Department of Commerce, that's an extremely high order to reach, because you have individuals in communities who are very reluctant to provide income-earning information to a government entity. So, but we believe that if we get the word out and let the residents know that this is not going to be an in-depth survey where you'll have to report how much you're earning and provide any income tax documentation to prove it, it will be a very simple and straightforward request for information where you'll have to state whether you are above a set income threshold. It'll just be a yes or no question. Did I capture the essence of that?
I believe so, yes.
So, and this is going to happen very soon. So it could begin in the next two to three weeks. But we're going to get information out to everybody, and we would admonish and encourage all of the elected officials, residents of the community, to spread the word and ensure that your friends and neighbors and other residents don't resist this survey, but they participate in it, okay? We do have a comment from--
Do you put it on the website, too? Because not everybody gets a sewer thing, so that way--
Yeah, absolutely, that will be done.
Is it coming in the sewer bill, or is it--
Well--
No, it will be separate. The paperwork will be separate, and there will be different ways to respond. You can respond in the written mail. We'll also have an option to respond online, if you want to go online to provide your documentation. They will provide some door-to-door if we don't have enough responses, but that, again, is a challenge, too, and an expense that they don't want to have to do if they don't have to. I realize, Mayor, I didn't give you exactly the correct information. This is going to be for all of the residents in Vader, anyone who's affected by the sewer or the water system, because they're including, the Lewis County Water System is going to also be wanting to dip into these funds in the future, in the next couple of years. And so they have, they're including them as altogether in the Vader survey documentation that they're doing.
Important point.
So it will be for everyone who's affected by water and sewer in the Vader area.
And a question arises in my mind, here we're discussing this in public in council meetings, would it apply, I think, to individuals who are on septic systems within our community?
Well, if it goes to the water--
Well, it's going to go to everybody who's on the water system and everybody who's on the sewer system. They're, the company that's running this is going to split the data out by who's on the water and who's on the sewer, and they're going to have to split that. But the, but it will be going out to just about everybody in the community and in the UGA as well. So Enchanted Valley will be getting that as well.
Well, all right, thank you. Hope that's clear to all present, but feel free to share that if you're on a community Facebook page, feel free to add that commentary yourselves. We know that many voices will be better heard than just a few. And if you wonder just what the ramifications are on this, obviously, we're trying to do everything we possibly can to reduce any possible increase in our waste treatment bi-monthly bills. And by not, by being an excessively affluent community, we lose out on three-quarters of a million dollars of grant funding. So that would have a significant impact on our waste utility bills. If we can get 80% and above to respond to it, and if we do qualify for lower-income citizenship, good sounding advice. So there, is that clear, I do the council? Okay, so we have our work cut out for us, but I think we can pull this off.
Tell your neighbors.
Yeah, tell your neighbors. All right, last item. As I noted during the roll call, I'm sure you're already aware, but on the March 21st, council member Judy Costello extended to myself and City Hall official letter of resignation. So when that is done, of course, that action is immediate effective the date of that letter. So I prepared an official letter to our city clerk, accepting her resignation, and then I personally delivered a letter from the mayor reflecting thoughts from the, you have a copy of it, this brief, but extending our appreciation for her service, however brief it was, on the city council. So she will not be here, and so obviously, the result of that is that I'm taking this moment in time to remind the council that when such situations arise in code cities, which the city of Vader is, and the state of Washington, and according to our ordinance guidelines, the city council normally selects an individual who's qualified from the community through the motion process, which I'm going to suggest that we set in motion, not deceiving, but next council meeting. And just so that you're aware, individuals who might be nominated by the city council need to be registered voters. They need to be residing within the city limits of the city of Vader, they, for, I believe, a period of at least one year, and they can't be current felons--
Oh, darn.
--who unfortunately, or fortunately, aren't able to vote. So with that, I would also like to note that from my perspective, this is going to be a very important decision on the part of the city council members. And I would suggest that we invite you to think of potential individuals, not tonight, but for the next two weeks. And I'd invite anybody who's in the audience, and I know that there are several in our council meeting tonight, who've already indicated interest in that, and I express gratitude for you being in attendance tonight, so that you can see how council meetings are running. But make your interest known to, through City Hall, contacting either Tammy Brendeke, the deputy clerk, or Jill Nielsen directly, or city clerk, and we'll get the list of names for you to consider by next council meeting. So is that clear? Does that help at all? So spread the word, and if you're interested, make your interest known. So with that, that concludes the, oh, I should also note that during the past three to four weeks, I, it's been brought to my attention that Tom Carruthers, who's been serving well on the planning committee, has had a relapse in some serious health issues that he's had to deal with, and he's informed me that he needs to be released from that position on the planning committee. So I've extended to him a similar letter, which hopefully you've noted in your paper. So I've accepted his resignation. Plus, we've had Ken Escher, who's been serving on the planning committee for similar reasons, has indicated he's no longer able to function in that capacity, although he's asked that when he does encounter, gets past these personal issues, that he'd like to be reconsidered at some point in the future. I made note of that in the letters you received, too. So with that announcement, we have two vacancies on the planning committee, and since we have a sizable group of individuals present, if any of you are interested in serving in that capacity on the planning committee, feel free to approach members of the council, or myself, or the city clerk, too.
And you don't have to live within the city limits.
Well, good point.
You're within three miles of the city limits and be on the planning committee.
Thank you for recalling that. That's important. So, and you don't, there's no one-year limit either on that. So three miles from within the city limits. Okay, well, with that, let's proceed with council comments or reports. Any members of the council have anything they'd like to share with the council or the public? During that, we'll proceed. How about now we go to the approval of this evening's agenda? I don't have any additions or obligations to report, so I delay council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written for March 28th, 2019.
Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Schei to approve the evening's agenda as noted. Do we have a second for that motion?
Is that a second?
Is that good? Jason, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, approval of minutes for our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes on March 14th, 2019.
Okay. Mr. Parsons has submitted a motion to approve those meeting minutes as written. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second?
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Also carries voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers, first half of March 2019, $28,091.60, and the new end of March 2019 total of $1,309.70, for a March 2019 total of $29,401.30.
Mr. Schei has approved the motion to, or submitted a motion to approve the voucher totals as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. We have a special report this evening from a member of the park board. So this is Montgomery. You want to make that report first?
I do. Stephanie Montgomery from the Park Board. First thing I'd like to let you all know is that all five park positions were filled. We've all agreed to stay on another year. We did have a vacant secretary and treasurer position that I have filled, and I am doing some training with Jill, and will be taking over the secretary minutes for that. We have had, Gary Cooper has been graciously been helping us with our park plan, teaching us some things, put us in contact with Ken Sellers, who has also been teaching us about grants, how to file them. So right now, we are going through some outdated things, very outdated park plans, and we've had a little bit of sickness in the beginning of the year, so we are regrouping and getting back on track with that. And we're talking about some fundraisers that we are going to do. We are going to have to come up with some funds for some of the grants on our end, so we've just started throwing some ideas and things out there for some upcoming fundraisers. And, and the club, and the park board is working with the beautification club, this for the cleanup that's coming up, and some of us will be volunteering trucks and times and just working closely with that, hoping to make that a successful event.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for that report. Appreciate all your doing. Okay, Rob?
Before we jump into the business, if we can back up to the council reports real quick, I just wanted to let you guys know that Parwell Farms got invited to the Alameda County Fair in Pleasanton, California, which runs through July 4th, so I will not be here for the 4th of July.
Oh, yeah.
And so if somebody wants to take over the 4th of July or do something with the 4th of July, that's it, I will be gone.
Okay, well, duly noted. With that, let's proceed with our city business. Item number one, the council is scheduled tonight to hold a second reading of ordinance 2019-02, amending the 2019 budget. You'll note that in our last council meeting, we had, we allocated some time for members of the public to make comment. It's required that we do that two times, so I believe that the first item, business on this agenda item, would be to invite comments from the public on that ordinance, after which I would anticipate that the council would be prepared to act on submitting a motion in some sort for that ordinance. So with that--
We do actually need a second reading, so if somebody needs to--
I'll read it. Okay, Mr. Schei has agreed to read that.
Ordinance number 2019-02, an ordinance of the city of Vader, Washington, amending the annual budget for the city of Vader, Washington, for the calendar year 2019, to adopt job classifications and pay schedule, and directing the city clerk to effect the budget amendment herein provided.
Thank you for reading that. Are there any comments that might be remaining, okay? Feel free.
Can I come up to the--
Yes, you have to--
Well, this is supposed to, is there anything that we can say that would change our mind? No? Okay, no more. All right.
All right. Any other comments on that ordinance? I'm well aware that there are many of you who may not obviously be aware of the actions on this, but that's the nature of the public council meetings. So with that, is there, if that concludes the public comment on this ordinance, is the council prepared to submit a motion, some sort of comment?
I move to approve ordinance 2019-02, adopting an imminent--
Amendment.
Amendment. Been a long day, sorry. To the annual budget of the city of Vader, Washington, for the calendar year of 2019, to adopt job classifications and pay schedule, and directing the city clerk to effect the budget as written.
Okay, you've heard the motion duly read by Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any other thoughts or comments? I'm putting it through vote. Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your action. It's been a long time coming, but we appreciate the attention to it. All right, item number two. This is an agenda item for council action. We were approached by the local Lions Club requesting use of the Warden Park field for Easter egg activity on April 20th. They're a nonprofit group, and they have insurance, but they submitted a request to see if the council might waive the park use fee. And we can't give you a figure on what that might be, because it depends on the number of people who participate in it. But I felt like I would like to, I'm very supportive of that, but I don't want to impose your decision on it.
Does that need to be in the motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to waive the rental, park rental fee for the Lions Club for their Easter activities on April 20th.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Parsons, to waive the park use fee, or rental fee for that Easter activity. Do we have a second?
A second?
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. Do you have any additional commentary? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, I'll be most grateful. Okay, the last item on our agenda, we have a comment, wait, hold on, is council prepared to hear comments on that, because you've already submitted a motion. Was that related to--
It is. I just wanted to let, you know, I have a copy of the strategic liability insurance for the, from the Lions Club.
Thank you.
For the Easter.
Okay, excellent. So why don't you go ahead and, after the meeting, talk to our city clerk. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for being here. It's good. Item three, council to continue our discussion of senior and disabled low-income sewer rates. I know that you were awaiting information that we agreed that we would provide to you at tonight's council meeting. So I'm going to turn the time over to our city clerk to share that information.
Okay. Just do a brief for anybody who hasn't seen this paperwork. The council was wanting to know how our approval of people receiving the low-income rate for sewer, how that compared to what the water department was doing, and then they also wanted us, wanted me to present some numbers that would show what effect the, including disabled, permanently disabled citizens in receiving the lower sewer rate, what effect that would have on the sewer revenues, and the regular ratepayers who would have to make up the difference for those customers. And so what I found was that, according to the water department, they said that they have approximately 20 ratepayers who qualify for their senior and disabled low-income rate. I found that they use the same chart that we use as far as determining eligibility, income eligibility, they use the same exact chart at the same exact level that we use, the very, or the extremely low rate, I believe is what it is on the CDBG form. So they use the same qualifying numbers, but the only difference is, is that they allow people who are permanently disabled to qualify, and we currently don't have that in our regulations. And so if we were to make that change, you see, as you see on this chart here, it shows that current, the current revenue that we're anticipating, now this is not including overages or anything, this is just straight base rate, is 100, about $194,000 is how much we anticipate at least billing for this year in 2019. That's from the budget. If we were to change and include disabled people in this lower rate, and we got the same results as the county, we had 20 people, you can see the next chart down shows that the effect that would have is dropping our income to, by $3,286. So we have to make up that revenue somewhere, because that revenue is already accounted for, it's already planned to be spent in the budget, so we need to make up that difference. And so to make up that difference, the regular ratepayers would have an increase of about $1.38 per month. So that would be like $2.70 per, $2.65 per billing cycle. The next question that was raised is the very last chart that you see. It was also asked if we made the amount that our rate is reduced, be more comparative to what the county offers, and offer it a 50% reduction in their rate. Right now, we currently offer a 20, it's, I believe, $21 difference in the rate, for $21 lower for the low income. If we did, if we offered them a 50% reduction, the same as the water company, then we would have to make up an additional, if we included disabled and we lowered it to 50 cent, to 50% rate, we would have to come up with an additional $4,498, plus the $3,286, so that's a total of $7.5 or $7.6 thousand. That would make the regular ratepayers' rates go up by $3.28 per month, approximately. So each billing cycle would be $7.60. So that's the information that you see here, so hopefully that's helpful. And does anybody have any questions about that?
How many customers do we have right now signed up?
223. If you look on the left of each of those columns, you see there's 213 regular rate payers plus one school, plus five.
No, 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 how many are on the program already?
Oh, right now, we have five.
So we have five people signed up. We use the same numbers as the water and they've got 20.
They've got 20, but they allow people who are permanently disabled to get the low rate and we don't. So that's the only difference I'm seeing is that the disabled, people who are permanently disabled but are not seniors qualify.
Thank you for preparing that information. Hopefully it's giving you some positive, um, and fuzzy feeling to initiate some action so that we can demonstrate that council is concerned and sensitive to the feedback that we've gotten on this topic.
So I guess what I need to know is, does council want to include permanently disabled? That's the first question. And then the second question is, at what rate? Do you want to do it at the same rate that they're paying now? Do you want to make an additional reduction in the amount that they're paying? Do you want it to go up? Do you want them to pay a little bit more but still have to be reduced? How, you know, yeah. So once I get that idea from council, what you want, or do you want to leave it all the same? Do you want to just leave it the way it is right now? That's an option too. But if you want to make any changes to this, then you can, if I know that, then we can take that to, to the ordinance and make the updates and changes and then it will affect the budget, or the rates will have to be affected as well. And I can show you that at the next council meeting, what it would look like exactly in exact numbers and then we can make a decision.
So if, if we decide to do this, say, let's just say the big one, right? The $3.28. Automatically, everybody's bill goes up that, right? But we've only got five people signed up. So does that money go into a different, does that get separated or does it just go into the fund? Does that make sense? Because we're raising it because of the low income, but if we don't have anybody sign up, then...
Yeah, if we don't have anybody sign up, well, so a couple of things to think about. These numbers are based on a 12-month cycle. We're already into the third month of the cycle and I didn't take, make the effort to break everything down by how many months were left in the year. So these numbers are just to give you a ballpark. So they will be a little bit different than this. They'll be a little bit less. But yeah, so what would happen, so if we were to institute the disabled, permanently disabled, then we would have to notify everyone that there is going to be a change in the qualifications for that and give them the opportunity. We could wait until that point, until after we've notified people and given them time to apply for this, then, then we could make rate adjustments. Or you could say, let's start as of the first of next year when we, and have the budget reflected then. If you want to say, yes, we want to include this, but we want to start at the first of the year and then everything will, it'll line up a little bit easier. But if you don't want to wait, we can, we either, a couple of ways you can do it. You can make the preemptive change to, to the rates based on what we are anticipating is going to happen, or you could notify people and see how many we actually get and see what the change is and the effect is on that and then make the change, you know, after the fact, after we see, maybe we don't get 20, maybe we only get 10.
So can we do, can we do a bump quarterly maybe or every other bill? So say this next bill, we've only got five people set up and then everybody hears about it, so we've got 10 people. So then that, instead of 20, it goes, we just divide it by 10 and spread it out. So it's a 20 cent raise or a dollar raise or whatever that is.
As far as I know, you can, I don't know any regulations or anything that say you can't raise it so many times during the year. I would think you could if you wanted to do it that way.
Does the program work so that it can fluctuate with the number?
What do you mean the program?
So, so just for round numbers, your sewer bill is $10 and we have a whole street of low-income move-in and it jumps it to the 20 people. So you put how many people that are on the program into it, 20, and then it divides it out and throws it in. But if that, if they all move out and now we're back down to five...
It would all have to be manual calculations that I would have to do and Tammy and I would have to work together to do and then make, present those effects of the people who sign up to council and then they have to change the resolution, or the sewer rate ordinance and then it would go into effect, you know, 60 days after that or...
Okay.
So it doesn't, we can't set up the billing program, if that's what you're talking about, to do that, no. It, it's ancient. We still haven't got the new one installed yet. We're still trying to get the new one installed.
Is the, do you know if the new one would do that?
I don't know.
Or something along those lines?
I don't know. I would be surprised, but, but that doesn't mean it couldn't. I don't know, we'd have to ask.
Okay. You have a comment from the public?
I just wondered how you feel, the size of $3 a month on the rest of taxpayers, how do you four feel about adding the disabled? $3 doesn't seem like a lot for, for billing for people, but the extra $20 is going to affect some people, the low-income people a lot. Some of them only have 20 or 30 bucks a month left. So if you gave them that discount, that's going to make a big difference in their life. How do you four feel about just adding the disabled people?
That's the route that I, that I'd like to see is just the disabled part, not changing anything else, but just add the 100% disabled to it.
I, I like it also. I like the disabled part, but I also, if we're at five people, why would we charge everybody for 20 people when we have no idea that we're going to get 20 people to actually sign up for it? I mean...
And these are just numbers to show us some numbers?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, I think you're kind of overthinking it a little bit.
I think my concern is that those, those folks that fall where they don't quite meet the lower rate, but they're so close, it's ridiculous. And then to charge them more money to compensate for those that, you know, that do qualify for, I feel bad for that group fixing that category there because it could be hardship for them. I don't think there's going to be a real win here.
Do you have another comment or a question from...
Yes, yes, I, this, these 20 people are on the water system now. They're 100% disabled or they partially fully disabled?
What the water told, yeah, for the, for the county, to meet the county's qualifications, you have to either be a senior, which is 65 or over, and under the threshold, or 100% disabled and under the threshold.
Of the 15,000 or whatever.
Yeah, whatever the, the number is for how many people are in your household.
And those people, 20 people...
There are 20 people who qualify. I can't tell you how many of them...
They live within the Vader area?
They all live within the water system area. That, that is an interesting point. I did never ask them how many of them are actually in the city limits because that's true, there may be less because we do include Encana Valley, so that's a fairly good number.
Increase everybody's bill before we even know.
Yeah.
Good point.
So it may be much lower than 20 people and that may be some of the difference, why they have such a, a big difference from ours.
All right, and yet another comment, question?
Well, I was wondering if when you're doing the billing, if people move or come off of that program, how, how are you going to keep adjusting this constantly?
Well, that's what I was saying. It, that's what I was saying, it doesn't, it doesn't do that.
No.
It'd have to be done manually, which would be a nightmare. But it was just a, I was, the reason I was saying that is sometimes with today's technology, you can just put in the number and it would change it up.
Well, we can't just change the utility rate and fly because you would need to have an ordinance and change our rate schedule and everything every single time someone would move in or out.
It was just a thought so that we weren't just charging everybody, but I think Jason's right, I'm overthinking it.
I'm trying to be really nice.
I'm trying to be nice, it's very difficult sometimes.
That's it. All right, well, our answer to feedback and input, any council action?
I say that we put it on the next agenda and Jill, if you could find out more details about the, where those people are.
If the county will give that to me, I don't know if they will.
Okay.
And do the question because they don't like to give out their customers' information. They were willing to give me a flat number, but I don't know if they'll tell me how many are within the city limits. I can ask them.
Sure.
Well, is it going to change? It's not going to change much.
Well, if it's five...
It's really not going to change anything except for, you know, we can put it out there that we're going to do this and then see how many people sign up for it and then make adjustments then.
Okay, we could put it out for billing cycle, wait a couple of months for the, for the interest to come back in and make our final decision then.
To me, that might be it.
It's the pick list option we want to do.
Is the, between the five and the 20 could be either the disability or they're just out of the city.
Well, why don't, why don't we do kind of like what Joe was saying is maybe in our next bill, put a flyer in there that says the council's considering adding permanently disabled, you know, if you qualify or you would be interested in this.
We'd like to see...
Let us know, we're trying to see how many people would be affected by this and contact us and see what kind of response we get. That might be a reasonable way. It puts this out longer, but at the same time, it's, it gives people the opportunity. And maybe, maybe we'll find more people that qualify that are seniors. I don't know. I don't know if maybe people aren't realizing that it's there. We try to notify everyone, we try to talk to people.
Okay, well, I sense that we have an actionable decision, so we will put this on our next council agenda as well and continue to refine the...
Well, if they want me to send out a notice, then we don't need to put it on the next council agenda until after the notice goes out and we get some response time.
Is he, are you concurrence with that or...
This is for the disabled, yeah.
So we're going to send out a notice, letting them know that that's a possibility and then if I send out a call, they would be interested in it.
Excellent, all right, you have action. Okay, well done. Then that concludes the official business portion of our agenda. We'll now entertain the public comment.
Several. First on the list is Anita Kini.
And I would remind all on the public comment list that you have three minutes and it's not expected that the council will respond to your comments, you're just sharing your thoughts with the public and the council.
I'm Anita Kini, I'm with the May Day Committee and I'm just here to, to give an update on what is going on for that event. We have some changes that we had to make. Usually we use the property on A Street and that's under, it's for sale within estate, whatever going on. So we've changed to putting vendors on Carol Groom's property on the corner of A Street and 506. We're asking to be able to use the strip of property by Warden Park to put some vendors and, and I guess the Beer Gardens, we're in, we're planning on putting that behind Andy Wilson's property on Main and Sixth, the corner of Main and Sixth. And we have insurance quotes and if anybody has any questions that they need me to answer, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Excellent. Next.
Did you want to also talk about Easter egg? Did you already talk about it? Okay. Tekeisha Kalissa.
I'm good. Mine wants to answer as well.
Okay.
Mine as well.
Are you Samantha?
Yes.
Okay, and then the last we have is Cindy Radcliffe.
Excellent.
Now that's halfway done, so I'll do it, I'm going to flip it.
All timing.
Cindy Radcliffe, 1027th Street. The things I asked about last week were not answered this week, so I'm going to ask them again. Have we given up on the stick pile? Are we just not going to pick a spot that we're going to put the stick pile on? It wasn't on the agenda, so I was just curious, could you at least give us an update if you guys are going to give up on that or going to do something about it? Potholes, we talked about potholes the last several months. The city worker guy was going to go out and fill up some of them. I drove around town, seems like you might have missed some or maybe you haven't had a chance to get from. Maybe somebody could update the city on, on what is happening with potholes. City hours, they're still 16 hours a week. Several citizens in town, I've been out talking to people, it's not really convenient sometimes for them to come down during those four or whatever it is hours a week, a day. If we could extend that maybe even just a little bit. We are paying for two women to sit in there for 28 hours a week, a week. Why can't we at least have it open for 28 hours a week instead of 16? Storm drain cleanout was another thing that kind of went into the black hole. Has any of the storm drains been cleaned out? I know Leona Hunter's field, Laura Field, still flooded this winter and I know several other places still flooded this winter and I, I know that I haven't seen a whole lot of those ditches be cleaned out. Are we doing anything on the storm drain cleanout actions that we've talked about? What's going on with Mrs. Nemerso place? You know, the one that you guys are going to foreclose on and, you know, get some of your money back? Is that a dead issue? The, I guess the point is, is that we're kind of in the dark. You're not really giving us any information about some of these things that some people really do care about. They want to know if their ditch is going to be cleaned out or if their field's going to flood. They want to know if their pothole. I'm telling you, the one in Charlie Vermilia's front yard, I mean, they can have its own zip code, it's, it's getting pretty deep. You know, the stick pile, people are cutting the trees back, you know, that's something that would affect every day, that doesn't cost any money just to open it, find a spot and open it back up. You know, so if, we could have a little bit more information out of our city government about some of these things that just kind of fall off the edge of the earth and never can, really seem to come back up. And I know that you have all the old agendas, so you kind of know what's out there, so maybe we could work on that. And the last thing is emergency support shelter, if we could possibly pick one, you know, it was just not too long ago, they had an evacuation in Longview area because of a fire. We don't have anything right now where people can come to. And the church, by the way, is open to being used as the emergency support shelter by the city. If you guys would go down, somebody go down and talk to him. He's, he's more than willing to come to some agreement. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank those and the public for your comments. We'll now conclude with our elected official comments. If there are any who care to provide any feedback, that was your opportunity, uninterrupted by individuals in the public.
Don't have to get up, do I?
No.
I just wrote it out because it was easier for me, I'm just going to be a bit snarly now. You can all hear me.
Okay.
I've given a lot of thought to several comments that have been made in the last couple of council meetings. I understand that many are unhappy about one thing or another, that's human nature. That being said, I would suggest that instead of throwing fuel on the fire, we encourage the citizens to attend the council meeting and speak up or ask for a meeting with the mayor to discuss and resolve the problem. I've watched this work twice and everybody was happy with the results. One of the reasons I keep pushing to get Jill out of the hot seat is to make City Hall more approachable, a place the citizens feel comfortable coming to when they have any issue. Jill has the knowledge. It would benefit everybody if she was seen as the solution, not the problem. I personally would not go door to door, but I'm always happy to listen and help in any way I can. I'm well aware that I just want everyone to be happy and I'm good with that. I also...